All right, we're going to call the board of the planning board meeting on Thursday, 1/23 at 5:45 PM. First order of business was a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to appoint a vacant position on the planning board and also appoint an associate member on the planning board. Council that we are required to post a meeting 10 days prior to the meeting and we're unaware of that. A week, excuse me, a week before the meeting, we were unaware of that until today. So that meeting will be at a later date to be determined. So our next order of business isn't until 6 o'clock, so we won't hold up until our applicant gets here. We're going to close the regular board meeting now if somebody wants to make a motion.
I move that we close the regular board meeting at this time.
You didn't? Did we want to do the minutes? No, okay, second.
It's actually a good time to do that.
Okay, so we're not closing?
We're not going to close the meeting, we're going to go to our meeting minutes.
Also, I wasn't sure if we could do it once we close it.
Skim right over, Heather.
I'm skipping, I'm skipping. Who's on Ridge Line Hillside with me now?
Setting next.
Okay.
That's where you go through.
Yep, yep.
Hello.
Hi.
Is that door open?
I think you can open it from inside.
Okay. I'll just.
The stairs that way are just like a hazard.
They're death traps.
Yeah, they're a death trap. Imagine if they were like wet or...
Somebody's asking a question.
I was testing to see if she could hear.
Oh. She can't.
She can't.
She can't see everyone. Oh, she can't see everyone. Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. Hello. Nice to see you. How's it going? She said she could hear all of us with that one over there?
Yep, even, I can, but I think, I think it's a really good.
Yes, they got the one over him has.
You can tell the mute button, that little green, see how the green bar goes? So when you talk, it'll pick it up, hopefully.
This is the last meeting we have? Yep. September. Christina, were you here?
No. No, I was on vacation.
She couldn't have made her motion with your... Um, yes, take that out, I'm sorry, I copy. It was probably me.
I, um...
Sorry, but I, I copy you.
I was on vacation enjoying my pneumonia. I had to go to the ER. Yeah. I had pneumonia. I don't know what is happening. Pneumonia and then the Vespa is like a little scooter, so my dad has, it's just like a different brand, dumped that in the grass, my legs are just bruises, just...
And I crossed off the...
We're keeping it really interesting in my house right now.
Yeah, okay, so I move to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning, the Hammond Planning Board dated September 3rd, 2023.
I second.
Later.
Aye.
Okay.
Which one do we look at now?
No, I don't.
I think just all of them.
That was the 13th.
That was the 13th because I wasn't there.
No choice. Okay. Thank you. Christina, do you want to... Do you have a copy?
They all have copies.
What is it with you? Will you tell me? Aren't those though? I think I just, oh, I thought you took them from the last time.
I probably did.
And I didn't put it back in, that's, okay, okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Some people clear out their folders, some people... I got mine here.
My stuff.
You know, some people start off wrong to begin with. You can't go. Subconsciously sabotaging Heather.
At least I called the right name.
Okay. Sixteen? Yep. There's a run down right over here. Okay, you want me to do a motion for this one? Yes, please. Okay, I move that we accept the Hammond Planning Board public hearing minutes for case 2023B that occurred on Wednesday, July 26th, 2023. Second. Christina, you want to...
Yeah, what's the date?
Not August 9th.
August 9th.
August 9th.
Oh, okay. I'll do it all in one, can I do it all in one word? Okay. I move that we approve both the public hearing minutes for continuance case 2023B on August 9th as well as the regular meeting minutes for August 9th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
A second?
Aye. Oh, I'm not going to say. Who made the motion? Christina?
I did.
Last one, October 13th. I'm 13, I thought we did that one.
You did that one. That's the one where I wasn't there.
Yes, that was the change. July 26th.
Oh, and these two, July 26th.
July 26th. August.
I have two July 26th in here.
Right.
They need to be...
I think we did that one. Then we gotta do August 9th?
Yep. We didn't do July 26th tonight, did you do it while I was gone? Okay. I move that we approve both the public hearing minutes for case 2023D and case 2023C from Wednesday, July 26th, 2023.
A second?
Okay. All right. So all of these minutes need probably five seconds, definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so where am I? Here. All right, so we have a motion to close that regular meeting? Okay, I move that we close the first meeting for the planning board dated September 27th, 2023.
Second.
Aye. All right. So all of these minutes need probably five seconds, definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so where am I? Hold on. All right, so we have a motion to close that regular meeting? Okay, I move that we close the first meeting for the planning board dated September 27th, 2023.
Second.
Aye. All right. So why are we... Okay, yes. All right, we're going to open our public hearing now. Excuse me.
Say it with your chest.
Excuse me, we're going to open our public hearing now. Thank you. So we're gonna, our first order of business, case 2023C, introductions of the planning board members, Madison Pixley Chair, Heather Beatty, Kristen Brodeur, Pat Corin, and Joanne Fior, our planning coordinator. Our statement of authority, first office is being recorded. The planning board is established under chapter 40A of the general laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with chapter 40A of the zoning bylaws of the town of Hampton, chapter 41 governing the submission and approval of lots and proposed subdivisions and approved and regulations governing subdivision of Hampton, Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hammond Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 26th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the townhouse, 625 Main Street, Hampton, Mass. on the application of claimant's appeals for a special permit under section 7.24 of the Hampton zoning bylaw for a substandard frontage lot, a property owned by the applicant at Wilberham, parcel 48029000. The information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. The board, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hammond Planning Board, published in the Wilberham Hampton Times, July 6th and July 13th, 2023. Reports received from other town departments and agencies, the town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to date. The building inspector stated a ridge line hillside review would be required, he also has a concerning burden of groundwater drainage runoff. The fire chief, Ed Poole, stated he needs more information about the driveway before approval from the fire department. The board of health reports some issue. The police chief, Scotty Trembley, reports he has no concerns. The conservation commission reported that this parcel contains NHESP vast areas, the applicant will have to file with NHESP before developing plan. So if the applicant wants to come forward for his presentation, can you come up and present, please? And anybody that plans to speak during this, keep to identify yourself before you leave. Welcome back.
Hi.
Welcome back. All right, so we have an updated survey?
I'm sorry.
Do you have an updated survey?
Yes.
Yeah. So the driveway is still going to utilize the traveled way and then the driveway comes off?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So the driveway is going to utilize an existing traveled way?
Yes. Yeah. That traveled way is just in our bylaws, that's a right of way, essentially, and it's been there for...
But I think that that's part of this covenant for use, just listed that they're using it.
Yeah.
So one thing that we noticed was that since you're partially in Wilberham, the frontage is in Hampton and in Wilberham.
Yes.
You may need to approach some Wilberhams. And, like, this is the only place that I saw.
I, I don't understand.
Like how you're coming to us for a substandard lot?
Right.
And you have frontage that's in Hampton and in Wilberham?
Right.
It might be worse if you're just speaking with the Wilberham planning board to make sure that they don't need anything from you either.
Because...
Just conversation, not open a public hearing, just a conversation with them, just let them know what you're doing.
Yeah, that you're planning to, you know, your hopes are to develop the lot and that some of your...
I'm not saying no, I'm just letting you know, that's not like a...
It's just because some of your land, some of the frontage of your land is in the town of Wilberham.
Right.
And they have their own bylaws and their own, you know, regulations, so it would just be...
But I'd be building in Hampton.
Yeah, but you just want to cover your bases.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, when I went to the town office, they, they weren't even aware that I, that I was a, that I had property in Wilberham. They didn't have the, their, their maps or, weren't updated. I think, I think they contacted you, right, Joanne?
Yeah.
To that point.
Yeah, according to Marion, the court assessors, she called me on it. I think it was a result of the land court.
I mean?
I think it was a result of the land court decision, their maps were not updated.
20 years ago.
That's what she said. Can you work?
I have a book.
The book? Oh, my book. That book. The big heavy book. I had more than... My client has...
Watch is in open. This is a, a lot. Why are you... Oh, did you have lacunage in hand? Yeah, but, no, I think, oh, I see. I see.
Joanne, what's the difference between the two of these?
Without the older one and one is the...
The traveled way, yeah.
The one is the August 8th date revised on the lot. I have the grease sticker on the latest ones.
Yeah, okay.
You put driveway dimensions in.
Oh, I see.
Change the letters.
Mine is the same.
Because it doesn't snap on.
Mine are the same, I think. Doesn't matter, I've got all of them. I think they're both new ones because they both have the same.
Oh, you may, you weren't here at the last one, that's why you don't have the old one.
No, no. At risk of confusing myself.
And that's why I think we need to use the... We try and better...
Yeah, sure.
We did this, this guy here. Yeah, that's who's there. 2023.
Any questions on the board? Or search?
The only question we, I had, looking at the butters, you had Joseph Dolan and Teresa Fraser, and Joanne, I didn't see on your butters list, I couldn't find Fraser, right? Joanne, we were...
Yeah, let me just pull it out again. It's on... I'm not Hamden, just... Right. It's... It's great. It's... It's great. 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 Thank you. All right, so where am I? Hold on. All right, so we have a motion to close that regular meeting? Okay, I move that we close the first meeting for the planning board dated September 27th, 2023.
Second.
Aye. All right. So why are we... Okay, yes. That's the first order. All right, we're going to open our public hearing now. Excuse me.
Say it with your chest.
Excuse me, we're going to open our public hearing now. Thank you. So we're gonna, our first order of business, case 2023C, introductions of the planning board members, Madison Pixley Chair, Heather Beatty, Kristen Brodeur, Pat Corin, and Joanne Fior, our planning coordinator. Our statement of authority, first office is being recorded. The planning board is established under chapter 40A of the general laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with chapter 40A of the zoning bylaws of the town of Hampton, chapter 41 governing the submission and approval of lots and proposed subdivisions and approved and regulations governing subdivision of Hampton, Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hammond Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 26th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the townhouse, 625 Main Street, Hampton, Mass. on the application of claimant's appeals for a special permit under section 7.24 of the Hampton zoning bylaw for a substandard frontage lot, a property owned by the applicant at Wilberham, parcel 48029000. The information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. The board, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hammond Planning Board, published in the Wilberham Hampton Times, July 6th and July 13th, 2023. Reports received from other town departments and agencies, the town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to date. The building inspector stated a ridge line hillside review would be required, he also has a concerning burden of groundwater drainage runoff. The fire chief, Ed Poole, stated he needs more information about the driveway before approval from the fire department. The board of health reports some issue. The police chief, Scotty Trembley, reports he has no concerns. The conservation commission reported that this parcel contains NHESP vast areas, the applicant will have to file with NHESP before developing plan. So if the applicant wants to come forward for his presentation, can you come up and present, please? And anybody that plans to speak during this, keep to identify yourself before you leave. Welcome back.
Hi.
Welcome back. All right, so we have an updated survey?
I'm sorry.
Do you have an updated survey?
Yes.
Yeah. So the driveway is still going to utilize the traveled way and then the driveway comes off?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So the driveway is going to utilize an existing traveled way?
Yes.
And then the highway comes in?
Yeah. That traveled way is just in our bylaws, that's a right of way, essentially, and it's been there for...
But I think that that's part of this covenant for use, just listed that they're using it.
Yeah.
So one thing that we noticed was that since you're partially in Wilberham, the frontage is in Hampton and in Wilberham.
Are you?
You may need to approach some Wilberhams. And, like, this is the only place that I saw.
I, I don't understand.
Like how you're coming to us for a substandard lot?
Right.
And you have a frontage that's in Hampton and in Wilberham?
Right.
It might be worse if you're just speaking with the Wilberham planning board to make sure that they don't need anything from you either.
Because, because...
Just conversation, not open a public hearing, just a conversation with them, just let them know what you're doing.
Yeah, that you're planning to, you know, your hopes are to develop the lot and that some of your...
I'm not saying no, I'm, I'm just letting you know, that's not like a...
It's just because some of your land, some of the frontage of your land is in the town of Wilberham.
Right.
And they have their own bylaws and their own, you know, regulations, so it would just be...
But I'd be building in, in Hampton.
Yeah, but you just want to cover your bases.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, when I went to the town office, they, they weren't even aware that I, that I was a, that I had property in Wilberham. They didn't have the, their, their maps or, weren't updated. I think, I think they contacted you, right, Joanne?
Yeah.
To that point.
Yeah, according to Marion, the court assessors, she called me on it. I think it was a result of the land court.
Are you mean?
I think it was a result of the land court decision, their maps were not updated.
20 years ago.
That's what she said. Can you work?
I have a book.
The book? Oh, my book. That book. The big heavy book. I had more than... My client has... All right, so now we've got a lot from the six... We have some three, we have...
Watch is in open. This is a, a lot. Why are you... Oh, did you have lacunage in hand? Yeah, but, no, I think, oh, I see. I see.
Joanne, what's the difference between the two of these?
Without the older one and one is the...
The traveled way, yeah.
The one is the August 8th date revised on the lot. I have the grease sticker on the latest ones.
Yeah, okay.
You put driveway dimensions in.
Oh, I see.
Change the letters.
Mine are the same. Mine are the same, I think. Doesn't matter, I've got all of them. I think they're both new ones because they both have the same.
Oh, you may, you weren't here at the last one, that's why you don't have the old one.
No, no. At risk of confusing myself.
And that's why I think we need to use the... We try and better...
Yeah, sure.
We did this, this guy here. Yeah, that's who's there. 2023.
Any questions on the board?
The only question we, I had, looking at the butters, you had Joseph Dolan and Teresa Fraser, and Joanne, I didn't see on your butters list, I couldn't find Fraser, right? Joanne, we were...
Yeah, let me just pull it out again. It's on... I'm not Hamden, just... Right. It's... It's great. You're saying that Fraser should be on this list?
We couldn't find Fraser on the, yeah, Fraser...
He came in last time, wasn't he? The woman that came in last time?
Wasn't, pardon?
Gonsovs, I think, that was sitting next to you.
I don't know her name.
I thought it was the other family on the...
Think it was.
But that would have been Dolan or...
Yeah, she did say she lived at the end.
There's Joseph Dolan and Donna Dolan. But that's Joseph Dolan and Donna Fraser.
Wilberham? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Wouldn't he have, anyone would have attended the last meeting? You were, okay, so it wasn't the one that's, okay. If it's not on our butters list, they're not within 300 feet of the property lot, so you know the name's on there, it's not on the butters list, so...
Yeah.
We should be fine.
Okay.
And her name is listed with Dolan and he's on the butters list, so should at least cover that address.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Hmm.
So have, has the Ridge Line Hillside review been done?
Uh-uh.
That one haven't done until he applies for a building permit.
For the...
And that's the same with the conservation commission?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, and the chief, the fire chief, has, has received information about the driveway?
He got the plans and sent back his comments, so...
The new plans. He got the old plans, I know, did he get the new plan?
He's saying he didn't have enough information on the driveway, what information is he looking for?
I don't know, he didn't, remember Jason, was Jason here? Yeah, Jason, he didn't provide what he was looking for, what he specifically wanted, that in general, common driveways...
That's a common drive, yeah, this isn't a common drive.
I can give him this, this latest version again and show him that he made the 14 feet, that's the requirement, I believe, and if it's on here, that's, you know, we can only require what's in the bylaws.
Right, right, I'm thinking he wants to know what the grade of the driveway is, but... Well...
Where's the minutes? The grade's not 12 feet, 8 feet, 7.5 feet. 21, 5, 4, 100. All access to negress ways shall intersect the public way at an angle of any grades plus or minus 10% at least 10 feet inside the property line and continue to the road lanes payment minimums of 22. Driveway at its intersection with the street must provide a leveling area with a scope of no greater than 1%, but first 2 feet with a scope of no more than 5%. The next 3 feet and no more than 15% for a, for shall be at 2% grade. The driveway must be first 2 feet provide adequate water runoff. So you can make sure your driveway meets those requirements. Does that have to go to the building inspector? The building inspector, so when you get that more defined, you'll go to Hammond Hill for that. Okay, so we don't need to present this to...
When you, if you do get your public, when you do build it, your, the grade of your driveway can be too... Oh, yeah, it has to be, you have to shovel it first. Yeah, it can be, yeah, but that's not a...
Any questions on the board?
No.
Any questions from the audience or comments?
We basically can't hear anything.
Yeah.
We can't hear what you're saying in all honesty.[859.81]
Watch as he move in. Oh, did you have a lot of furniture in hand?
Yeah, but no, I think.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I see.
Joanne, what's the difference between the two of these?
Without the older one and one is the older.
It's the travelogue, yeah.
The one with the August date revised on the lot. I have the grease sticker on the latest ones.
Yeah, okay.
You put driveway dimensions in.
Oh, I see.
Change the butter.
Mine are the same. Mine are the same, I think. Doesn't matter. I've got all of them. I think they're both new ones because they both have the same.
Oh, you may, you weren't here at the last one. That's why you don't have the old one.
No, no. At risk of confusing myself.
Who did this? This guy here? Yeah, that's who's there.
Any questions? On the board?
The only question we, I had, um, looking at the Butters, you had Joseph Dolben and Teresa Fraser. And, Joanne, I didn't see on your Butters list, I couldn't find Fraser, right? Joanne, we were...
Yeah, let me just pull it out again. It's on. You're saying that Fraser should be on this list?
We couldn't find Fraser on the, yeah, Fraser.
He came in last time. The woman that came in last time.
Wasn't, uh, pardon?
Gonsovs, I think. That was sitting next to you.
I don't know her name.
I thought it was the other family on the...
Think it was.
But that would have been Dolben or Stewart.
Yeah, she did say she lived at the end.
There's Joseph Dolben and Donna Dolben. But that's Joseph Dolben and Donna Fraser.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Wouldn't he have, anyone would have attended the last meeting? You were, okay, so it wasn't the one that's, okay. If it's not on our Butters list, they're not within 300 feet of the property line. So, no, the name's on there, it's not on the Butters list, so.
Yeah.
We should be fine.
Okay.
And her name is listed with Dolben and he's on the Butters list, so. At least cover that address.
That's what I was wondering.
So, have, has the Ridge Line Hillside, have you been done?
That won't get done until he applies for a building permit.
For the, and that's the same with the Conservation Commission?
Yep.
Okay, alright. So, and then the chief, the fire chief, um, has received information about the driveway?
He got the plans and sent back his comments, so.
The new plans. He got the old plans, I know. Did he get the new plan?
He's saying he didn't have enough information on the driveway. What information is he looking for?
I don't know, he didn't remember Jason, was Jason here?
Yeah, Jason.
He didn't provide what he was looking for, what he specifically wanted, that in general, common driveways.
That's a common drive, yeah, this isn't a common drive.
I can give him this, this, um, latest version again and show him that he made the 14 feet. That's the requirement, I believe. And if it's on here, that's, you know, we can only require what's in my list.
I'm thinking he wants to know what the grade of the driveway is. Well.
Where's the minutes? The grade's not to exceed 80, 75 feet. All access to negress ways shall intersect the public way at an angle of any grades plus or minus 20%. At least 10 feet inside the property line. Continue to the roadways pavement minimums of 22. Driveway at its intersection with the street must provide a leveling area with a scope of no greater than 1%, but first 20 feet with a scope of no more than 5%. The next 3 feet and no more than 15% for a, which will be at 2% grade. The driveway must be first 20 feet provide adequate water runoff.
So you can make sure your driveway meets those requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Is that to go through? Building inspector, so when you get that more defined, you'll go to him and he'll...
Okay, so we don't need to present this to...
When you, if you do get your building, when you do build it, your, the grade of your driveway can be too... Oh. Yeah, it has to be, um, you have to show the fire. Yeah, it can be, yeah, but that's not a problem.
Any questions on the board?
No.
Any questions from the audience or comments?
We basically can't hear anything.
We can't hear what you're saying in all honesty.
Feel free to move closer.
Essentially, we were just talking about...
Was that what I heard, or?
No, our zoning bylaws require it to be 14 feet wide and the plate reflects that. We were talking about the grade.
The grade.
The grade.
Yes, stiffness.
That's part, is part of the driveway treatment application, which is part of the building inspector. So it's not really something we need to be reading out, but we're just taking it forward, but...
As I'm saying, the...
Do you want me to say your names? I'm sorry.
Yes, Stuart Graham.
Stuart Graham.
That they're now planning to use the right of way up there as a driveway and not put a driveway in.
Correct, they're gonna branch off to the, up the top and go into their lot.
Okay.
So it'll be a smaller section. Here, so this is the, it says travelway, that's the right of way, and then there's a proposed driveway right off of it, and the house will be somewhere in this.
Any other questions?
I have a, I have a question, I was talking about ownership of that second person. This one, again.
This here?
Yes.
The section of land that's in Wilbraham?
Yeah, um, I know Wilbraham is assessing the tenant for taxes on that. I ran the things through the registry of deeds, there's no deed over Mr. Casalis for that land. So, at this point, as of record, the ownership of the land, I think, is in doubt, still in him. So I was wondering if that needs to be cleared up? And I didn't see a land court case regarding this land. If there is one, give me a side joke, I ran...
County Registry of... The rule for usually the right of way in that area, which they're part of, they're part of another...
No problem with the right of way, with the land.
Right.
It's time that the land, actual, and the land were...
The part of the parcel that's in Wilbraham.
73.5 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
According to the Board of Assessors in Wilbraham, she gave these, Mary Ann. She specifically wrote on here, owned by Casilius, this, that little sliver, that sliver.
Yes, here. Took a 45 foot.
That was settled in land court.
We did, we did have that, I don't have the copy of it, but we had that land court.
Okay, I didn't see a decision.
I have too much stuff. The right of way.
That was back in 2014.
Is that one, you remember it, 2014?
I'm sorry.
Was that 2014?
What?
The land court?
No, that was...
2008. Put it 2008.
2008, Ted? No, it was, uh... Yeah, 2008. February 8th.
Yeah, I'd like a copy.
So you...
I owned it.
Yes.
This is still the tax.
I was gonna talk in the second quarter based on that case.
I'll wait the same.
The land court was saying, sir, that, um, that the boundaries were determined by the court to be located on a plan drawn by Dirkie White Town and Chapel Lane Surveyors dated March 31st, 1998. So that the bottom land?
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, was modified and approved by the court. Filed in the land registration office, so that was modified supposedly in Dirkie White, 1998. This one? Yeah. Right, yeah, I have to figure that.
I'm sorry, that's what I said.
Right, right, yeah. Did you think you owned the land in 1998?
Right, yeah, I did.
You did?
I felt I owned it in 1998. And in all honesty, when he just said the town of Wilbraham didn't think he owned the property, I have been paying taxes on it up until that point.
Up until what point?
Up until, what was it, just last year, they told you that, or just recently? When did Wilbraham tell you they didn't think you owned it?
When I went for the Butters. But I was told that that was my property going way back.
Well, I, I don't know what they told you, I'm just saying I...
That's what it was settled in land court.
I paid taxes on it up until two years ago, a year and a half ago.
So this is, of the state of discrepancy, it sounds like, within the state, land court.
Yeah, it's a land court discrepancy, I don't think someone else will be able to...
We won't be able to resolve this.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I paid the taxes on it.
Or the Board of Assessors in the town of Wilbraham, go to them, yeah?
Well, I went to the town of Wilbraham and I asked why all of a sudden my taxes went down $7 on the property.
When did that happen?
I didn't get an answer.
Well, Mary Ann, and that's...
Because obviously there's a screw up someplace.
When did your taxes get down to $7?
Uh, that was a year and a half ago.
Prior to that, it was considerably more.
Okay.
It went down $7.
It went down to $7.
To $7.
To $7.
To $7.
To $7?
Yeah, well, do you know what?
I don't know, it was close to $300, I think.
Approximately $300 a year, until about a year and a half ago. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, um, might be something you have to bring up with Wilbraham or assessors.
Yeah. Well, I, I asked when I went in to pay the tax bill, I said, can you please explain to me why I am only being charged $7 on this piece of property now?
I'm guessing it took land court a little while.
I have no idea, absolutely not.
A little while?
So they didn't know. They needed the records because they weren't aware of the land court decision. That's what I think Mary Ann and the assessors have explained.
But yet they didn't charge him for tax, they didn't charge him the taxes. They weren't aware of the land court decision, but they were aware that he no longer owned most of that land. Which is very bizarre, I... Yeah.
Well, it's the same thing that holds true here.
Honestly, I didn't see this decision, I've never seen it.
You've never seen it.
My attorney, we were going back and forth on this property before, I've never seen this decision.
When I bought this property, I owned 15 acres, according to the surveyor and the deed. But then, then it found that Brady, who owned the property behind me, said that I was on his property. And I said, no, that's not true. That's when all the troubles started.
So, sorry? Oh, I turned that off, oh, I did, but it's... My God. Well.
She's 47, I think she'll handle whatever it is. Alright. Substandard.
Don't call emergency services.
Whether or not the taxes, I mean, that we can't...
Yeah, we can't resolve this at all.
But can, can we approve this special permit until this is resolved?
I think everything...
Can you just clarify for me what the, what, like, what is the real issue between you guys? I'm not clear on what's left here.
It seems to be that they both think that they own this sliver of land in Wilbraham. And this gentleman here believes he owned it because he has this, he went to land court.
Yeah.
And was given it, but this gentleman here has been paying taxes on it since the entire time up until a year and a half ago. And Wilbraham never told, no one told him that his land had been given to this gentleman. And so he's disputing the fact that this gentleman owes the land.
And he needs that for his frontage, well.
Right, he does, yes.
Yeah, he needs it, he needs to own it for his frontage.
Casilius, is that how you say your name?
I mean, Casilius.
Kisselis? Oh, Kisselis, Mr. Kisselis needs that frontage. In order for us to, um... Give him a substandard frontage to build on, right? So, I, I don't feel, I mean...
He needs that land in Wilbraham that he owns to be his frontage.
Right.
And I think the problem is, we have evidence that it is his. Right, I was gonna say, everything we have, but I think he also should certainly seek out why you pay taxes.
Yeah.
So everything we have on paper meets the requirements, shows us that.
Legally, I think we have to go by what we have on paper.
Agreed. And maybe...
So in your opinion, he's met all the requirements, is what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're 285, right? So is that triangular piece 295 V? Is that how you're built, when you get your tax bill? 295, how do they look?
It's a 290.
Because they're indicating here on your Butters list, you own 285.
And I own 290.
95 V, they say you own. New part of 295 V is Casilius, so I'm assuming the new part of 295 V, that's assuming. That's what they're ultimately saying, I'm not saying. So that's why we were told he owns that parcel there, so he has that frontage, so... I think Wilbraham, you better go to, yeah?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Well, my issue is just a tax issue.
Yeah, well, file for an abatement.
Definitely. An abatement on the last 15 years, I mean.
Whenever the decision was filed for the registry, that point on, is what you would go for. Because if you weren't notified, or the town wasn't notified, the records weren't correct, to build property, so... I don't know, I'd ask Wilbraham assessors.
I mean, can I ask you, did you get a tax bill on it? Have you paid a tax bill on it? Did you get, pay taxes on it?
I've been paying taxes on my property.
Not your property, that specific?
That sliver in Wilbra, do you get a tax bill from Wilbraham?
No.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so, okay, this is a, this, yes, this is a Wilbraham.
And Wil...
Didn't you think it was odd, you owned a piece of property, you didn't get any taxes on it? The tax?
Well, that's between him and, that's between him and the assessor, I mean, whatever. I think people don't pay their taxes. Maybe they sent it to the wrong thing, he is responsible for going down there, but... Doesn't mean he doesn't own it.
Probably a civil matter between those two parties.
Yeah.
But there's no dispute on the ownership of who owns that, it's just who's paying the taxes on it.
We've got all the land court documents.
Well, he may have a dispute, but we don't have anything before us that is evidence of that dispute.
Right.
But his dispute is not ownership, right?
I think it is, because he's been paying taxes.
He's been paying taxes on it, so.
But he's not saying, I didn't hear him say, I still own the land. You might be paying taxes on it, but you're not claiming I still own it, right?
Well, I'm not claiming anything, I'm just asking, why is it that I'm paying taxes on his property?
Right, right.
Yeah, were you made aware of this land court decision?
He said he's never seen it.
I, I, I entered an agreement with him.
The right, the right.
For, for the sale of that property.
You entered into an agreement, but you, in your opinion, in your memory, it, the sale never went through?
Oh, no, it went through.
Oh, so you did sell him that property? Okay, okay, all right, that, that's a little bit clearer.
It did get sold.
It did get sold to him, but you've been playing, paying the taxes despite the sale.
I've been paying taxes on it all these years.
Yeah, okay, all right.
This is a question about the...
He's been building, he hasn't gone...
Okay, well, that's something you have to take after Wilbraham. Because that's where the error must have occurred.
I mean, that's, that's an arg, that's not an argument with me, is it?
No.
No.
I mean, I can see where he can, he's got a point with the town of Wilbraham.
Yep.
But I had the same problem with the town of Hampden, because I had 15 acres and then they whittled it down to 10. And then it, I think it was 7, then it went down to, I mean, I went through that also.
Your motion?
I mean...
I move that we approve the application for special permit. At the address, um, 51 Burley Road in Hampden, Mass. For Raymond Casilius, as presented with the updated plans.
I second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So that means that I have a building lot now?
A substandard.
Will it, yeah, will it be?
I have to file with the town clerk. Once I've filed with the county appeal period, I'll send you a letter. After the 20 day appeal period, on the 21st day, you may come to the office. That's the process.
That's all right.
You have to go by, but I, 14 days.
21 days is fine, I've been at this for 40, over 50 years.
So what's another 34, I think, 34 days?
Yeah.
That's the process.
I feel good. Thank you very much, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I get it. Stayed with it, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, people.
No, they, they just said it is.
So now, a motion is, is public hearing?
Apparently the fire department.
And we'll move that we close the public hearing, um, for, um...
So, fire department has to...
2023, sorry.
I mean, you're saying you're at 10% range, but...
It's 2023.
I mean, it is deeper than 10% in the public census there.
All papers paid.
Aye.
Apparently they...
At 6:42, they're doing all type of obstruction. At six forty-two, they're doing all that construction.
I know.
Right behind our house. Um, completely scope.
What I don't understand, people.
Yeah, they look way up.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's an idea. You can't pass on that traffic.
Sit over.
And then when there's snow, you can't.
Are you ready to do that Ridgeline Hillside for you? F I, never did once.
Oh, okay.
But we're both.
I've had them up in my neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure they ever really.
I actually think we have two coming up.
That was.
There was another application, oh, Alston Graham's needs a Ridgeline Hillside.
Does he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was like what he's doing.
Yeah. They were, yeah.
Okay. We need to have one. We need, with the exception of everything, except for these, I need this. There's so much.
I do like Wilberham, but not when I don't have, have space.
Come on in the back.
You know? I do have a good piece.
I was gonna say it's twenty twenty-three. Oh, we are.
We're so good.
I see, all right.
Open a level hearing, continue up.
So, you know, I guess there are reasons, days that he's not going down.
I guess this is just.
So now how is it gonna, when you're sitting out in your yard? And all the trucks going up and down is not going to. Okay.
Yeah, that's. All right.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Good evening.
The land is not there.
Only in a younger generation. I know, well nowadays. Can't do anything nowadays.
Can't do anything.
Can't be a job. It's not allowed.
I told these younger guys in my neighborhood, I said, listen, I said, good manners will get you everywhere. It's so noticeable.
It is, because it's so random. It really is. It, it's just.
All right. The final order of business, we are going to reopen public hearing for case of twenty-three B. Planning board members, Madison Pixley, Heather Beatty of the. Foror, Pat Coy, Joanne Pior, Peter Fergier. Our statement of authority, the planning board is established under chapter forty A of the laws of Massachusetts and acting applied to chapter forty A. And then zoning bylaw, the title handed chapter forty-one, covering the submission and approval of tops. The whole subdivision, the rules to regulate the surveying with subdivision of land in Hampton, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the hand of the planning board, we're going to reopen the hearing on Wednesday, June fourteenth, that's eight PM. The townhouse, six twenty-five Main Street, Hampton, Mass. on the application of Bedrock Financial LLC as trustee. Cumberland Blues Realty Trust for special permit approval for substandard lots for parcels. Fifteen zero three five zero lot C and fifteen zero three five zero lot D under section seven point two four of the Hampton zoning bylaw, special permit approval for a common driveway under section seven point five four two of the Hampton zoning bylaw to access parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot A, parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot B, parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot C and parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot Z. All parcels are located on Fresh Road and owned by Bedrock Financial LLC. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available to the public during normal business hours. For the forum, Madison Pixley, Chair of the Hampton Planning Board, published in the Wilberham Hampton Times on May twenty-fifth and June first, twenty twenty-three. We will be continuing this public hearing due to missing drainage clogs and the applicant being out of country. Uh, Mr. Joyce has already agreed to extend this to October eleventh at six thirty PM. The townhouse, six twenty-five Main Street, Hampton, Mass. So you want to sign this agreement? The twenty-seven.
I happen to know. The sticky tables?
They're so sticky. Oh, that's so gross. I don't even wanna, I'm used to it though, I guess.
Um, and just for record, Heather Beatty signed our certification, certification in section five three D, which was part of the multiple, and saying that she missed her last meeting, but there was no evidence for her review or report because we did only open and close the meeting to, set it to a later date.
So everyone signed the documents?
Yeah.
Move, move to close the planning board meeting, um, of the town of Hampton of nine twenty-seven twenty-three.
Second.
All favor?
I agree.